And rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight with public audience. Anyone who wants to speak can speak for up to five minutes. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. I am concerned that the town is and has been in violation of the Eno Trust. On November 25th, 1882, Amos R. Eno conveyed 140 acres to the town of Simsbury, quote, "for the poor of Simsbury." The town of Simsbury is the fiduciary of the Eno Trust. In 1989, the Attorney General specified that compliance with the trust required development of housing for persons, quote, "at or below the poverty line." Presently, Eno Farms affordable housing is advertised with a maximum annual rental income of $77,280, with rent starting at $1,064 a month. Simsbury Housing Partnership Committee selected Corporation for Independent Living, CIL, which effectively removed the town from the kind of direct oversight and management which characterizes the classic trustee or fiduciary. This is a 12-page report generated from the Attorney General's office. On April 29th, 1997, the Attorney General's office, with Richard Blumenthal as the director, the Office of Attorney General Charities Division, under the direction of Janet A. Spalding-Ruddell, responded to the legal analysis by the town of the Eno Trust and the development of Eno Farms affordable housing as a violation of the deeds of the Eno Trust. Mary Glassman was Simsbury's first selectman and the chairman of the housing partnership. CIL worked with CHFA to raise money through the PRIME program, Private Rental Investment and Equity Program. The PRIME program was used for enterprise zones. Simsbury was not an enterprise zone. CHFA committed to a first mortgage of $1,795,000. DOH supplied a second mortgage of $2,782,000. And financing from private outside investors for tax credits completed the $5 million financing. National equity under this program would own 20 units of the 50 units to be developed. The law firm of Rome, Case, Cannelli &amp; Klebenoff developed a document called the Common Interest Ownership Community, having the applicant sign this document, thinking that with sweat equity, they could eventually receive ownership of their units. All these attorneys that wrote this allegedly fraudulent document were political operatives. The conclusion of the Attorney General's report stated, and I quote, "Obviously, our concerns include the issues of one, the income levels of the population served, two, reorganization of the housing, so that the town regains the level of oversight and control that it is as a trustee needs to ensure that the housing serves the poor and is answerable to the public, and the revisions and abandonment of language in the ads, lease and other documents which would tend to mislead a prospective tenant about the nature of his or her legal interest in the rental unit at Eno Farms or the amount of rent charged for a unit." End quote. There was a continual barrage of lawsuits from the renters over the years alleging that the document they signed were fraudulent. A meeting was scheduled to affirm the conclusions of the Attorney General's report. However, it is alleged that Richard Blumenthal refused to sign the agreement and no revisions to the Eno Farms affordable housing was enacted. At the present time, CHFA is the owner of Eno Farms and Conover manages the property. Eno Farms is considered an REO property, real estate owned property, and is included in CHFA's assets. It is time the town resolves the issues regarding the Eno Trust and bring all the entities, the town farm, the town dump, and Eno Farms affordable housing into compliance. On October 24th, 2018, NBC Connecticut reported that, quote, "Staffing struggles lead to emergency response time." The Simsbury dispatches are the first voice to the public when residents are in need of emergency care. When a call comes into dispatch, there are calls for response to the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association, Granby, Canton, et cetera, all volunteers' organizations on a priority basis. The response time has been lengthened due to a lack of volunteers. Sometimes the dispatchers have to reroute ambulances on a priority basis. All the calls take time where time could be the difference between life and death. As I listen to my scanner, it appears that the response time has lengthened. One example of many, on November 14th, 2018, from 13:30 to 14:40, the dispatchers were making calls for ambulance response for several emergency calls. I would urge Town Manager Maria Capriola to review this tape. Lack of response from Volunteer Ambulance Association places the dispatchers in a very stressful environment with response out of their control. Volunteerism has been vastly reduced. The model of volunteers to support emergency services has to be replaced with paid staff. AMR has paid staff with employees on-site at all times. AMR is used by Farmington and Avon for emergency services with no cost to the town. The only requirement for service to the town would be a building for their ambulance and supplies. The Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association is presently in a building that could be used by AMR. It is time for Simsbury to embrace this model. And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, news feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Joan. Anyone else like to speak tonight in public audience? Yeah, Dr. Rinaldi.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
My name is Mike Rinaldi, and I reside at Pinnacle Mountain Road. I just passed out an opinion page article from the Wall Street Journal. It basically says what's wrong with Connecticut. You can just substitute Connecticut and put Simsbury on there, and you'd be pretty close to the same problem. Also in tonight's Wall Street Journal, on the opinion page, titled Conservatism Isn't Dead Yet. Y'all should read this. This is a fantastic, it's by a guy by the name of Bobby Jingle. He was the governor of Louisiana, and he ran for presidency at one time. What I came here really to talk about were two things. One, I have no idea what the Business Development Incentive Committee is and who's on it. And I said I would not use words like dumb, stupid, you know, things like that. I'm not going to use those kind of words. But on your agenda tonight, it says, "The Business Development Incentive Committee," whoever they are, "supports and recommends to the Board of Selectmen, the property on 690 Meadows, Hot Meadow Street, approve a tax abatement for renovations, construction on the property, and appoints the town manager and the town attorney to negotiate an agreement reflective of this resolution, to waive 50% of the cost of construction, plumbing, electrical, fire sprinkling, demolition, and a 10-year tax abatement program that will cost the town almost a half a million dollars." And this estimated tax abatement over the 10-year period will total $571,690, and this was done by the town finance director. Now, I'm not opposed to the renovation of the Ensign Bickford House. I think somebody should take care of it. It's a treasure. But I and all you people and everybody in this town should not spend a half a million dollars to make it a restaurant. Metro Bis has got a nice restaurant up there. It's in their house. They want to move in there, let them pay the price. Couple apartments, that is not economic development. That's rescuing a poor old house for some guy who wants to build a restaurant. It's insane. Now, my second point. We recently reconvened a Charter Vision Commission meeting, which had a choice of how we should manage our town to a town manager or continue the first selectman the way we had it. There were 11 members on that board for that commission. Four Democrats, four Republicans, three Independents. On that board of those 11 members, two were former first selectwomen. Two were members of the Board of Education. And one was a former chairman of the Board of Finance. Pretty knowledgeable people. Out of those 11 members, six did not know how the Board of Education is formed. 90% of the people in this town don't know how the Board of Education is formed. When you go to the polls, and there are four people running, two on the Republican line, two on the Democratic line, and you go there and it tells you to vote for any two but all four elected, that's not an election. That's a popularity contest. Now, why is this a problem? They say, "Well, Simsbury, we have a great school system. Why change things?" I'm not, I don't want to change things. I just want to make it more cost effective. Now, why am I saying this? Because in the past 10 years, the Board of Education has implemented two programs, nothing to do with the quality of education. We could have done that with our own dollars. It cost us a half a million dollars to do all-day kindergarten because we took choice students. It took us $700,000 to do the eighth grade, eight periods, in the high school from seven periods, because the teacher's contract wasn't reconstructed. Teachers teach five out of seven periods. They now teach five out of eight. We had to hire 16% more teachers, $700,000. That's an ongoing problem, over a million dollars per year for the past 10 years. Then we get to Phase Three of the high school. Everybody wants that, I mean, the middle school to be renovated. I do. I'm an opponent of it. But the people in town were given the wrong project. The Board of Finance knew the right project, but they had two members of the board, one who doesn't show up half the time, and the other one had no idea what she was talking about. And they convinced the chairman of the board with one missing member to put that project on the referendum for vote. A thousand people voted for it. They had no idea what they were voting. Had no choice. So what I'm trying to say is, we have a town that's in trouble. Big trouble. When I moved to this town, the mill rate in this town was 28 mills. Farmington was 22, and Avon was 26. Ours is 38. Avon is 28. Farmington is 24. We're out of control in spending. We have to do something, because if we don't, people are going to move out of this town. Right now, when I went to the, right now, when I went to the polls to vote, I met a friend. I said, "How come you don't have your sticker on you?" He says, "Well, I don't live here." I said, "You do. I see you all the time." He says, "No. I reside in Florida, but I live on West Street."
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak tonight in public audience? Yeah, Dave.
Dave Ryan, 20 West Ledge Road. Couple of things. One, just an announcement that you should be aware of. Last board meeting, the Simsbury Performing Arts Center elected Bob Hensley as its new president and chairman, and I am now the past chairman, having served five years, the last five years in managing the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. So I think all of you should congratulate Bob and look forward to working with Bob. His enthusiasm is fantastic, and his desire and energy are wonderful, and it's what we need to go forward. Secondly, I was a member of this infamous commission that made the recommendation to you to approve the tax abatement for the Ensign House. And the reason was that that property is a very, very desirable, historically recognized property, and the proposal to renovate it is one that encounters, involves about $5 million worth of investment, and is a very, very high-risk investment that will result in mixed-use development, residential and commercial. And when I was on the planning commission 10, 15 years ago, we had the developer of Blueback Square come and talk to us about mixed-use development and what it takes to do the things that make a new urbanism desirable environment. One of the things he said is, "It's almost impossible to finance without local government involvement." And I think it's important that we do that, and we step up and make that investment of tax abatements, which are a percentage of the assessment, and as the investment goes in, the assessment will go up. But anyway, and the abatement or the forgiveness, I guess it is, of 50% of the fees associated with the permits for various things is something that I think we also felt was a justifiable and important contribution by the town. So I'm in favor of this investment, as the whole board was, and thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks for your service on S-PAC. Anyone else tonight in public audience? Okay. We'll move on then to the First Selectman's Report, and it's relatively brief this week because of the relatively short turnaround. First, my thanks to everyone who purchased a gift card from one of our local businesses on Black Friday and Small Business Saturday. This initiative organized by the Simsbury Main Street Partnership helps, gives businesses a bump in cash and ensures that we keep our dollars local heading into this holiday shopping season. Thank you, too, to those businesses that participated. The Simsbury Chamber of Commerce is holding a ribbon cutting for Andy's Italian Kitchen December 6th at 4:30 in the afternoon. Despite some threats of rain, Simsbury celebrates, went off without a hitch. I want to thank the nonprofits and the businesses who opened their doors and organized activities. I especially want to thank the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company for another amazing parade this year. In December, the local chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution will be laying wreaths on the graves of veterans in Simsbury as part of Wreaths Across America. On December 15th, they'll be holding a noontime ceremony at the cemetery on Plank Hill Road. Anyone interested in sponsoring a wreath to honor a veteran can fill out a form, you'll find those forms at the entrance to the cemetery along Hot Meadow. Just a brief planning update. On November 19th, the zoning commission approved the zone change for 18 acres off of Route 44. The application was for a change from residential to business. The applicant is currently working with potential tenants. Also, town staff has been approached by another operator wishing to reopen the mobile station in the center of town. Also, you can sign up for email updates from the town, so you always know what's going on in our community. On the homepage of the town website, you'll see a big link that says Subscribe to News, and from there you can specify what kind of news you want to receive, including the agendas for our various boards and commissions. I'll turn it over now to Maria for our Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. I also have a brief report this evening. We did update one of your agenda items this evening. It was the attachment for the EverSource Energy Temporary Access Permit. We did have a request to have EverSource strike one proposed sentence from that agreement, which they agreed to do, so you were provided with an updated attachment this evening, and we have updated that document online as well. For budget-related items, a reminder that the tri-board meeting is coming up this Monday night, December 3rd, at the library. I'm also going to be doing a budget kickoff with our leadership team Thursday of next week, December 6th. I'm really excited about the opportunity. We have been working on developing a budget preparation manual, and in that we are going to slowly begin incorporating GFOA recommended best practices for the budget document presentation into the materials that will be submitted to myself and our finance director, but then ultimately in the budget document that's going to be submitted to you. So we'll be going over things such as operating budget requests, revenue estimates, capital project requests, service improvement requests. We've developed forms, so we can make sure that we're getting the data and detail that we need in order to really properly process and analyze those requests. I'm really looking forward to kicking that off with the leadership team. And again, that will be the Thursday following tri-board. And also a reminder, for those of you that may be interested in the capital and CDR policy that has been discussed, the Board of Finance is anticipated to possibly take action on that draft policy at their meeting following the tri-board discussion on Monday night. The Economic Development Commission will be meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, at 5:30 PM here in the main meeting room of Town Hall. We have been working on their comprehensive orientation materials and look forward to helping that group get started on their work. For departmental news and notes, under Planning and Community Development, CROG has extended the deadline for public comment on the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. The snowstorm that we had on November 15th had somewhat affected that deadline, and so they have extended written comments that they will accept until November 30th, and there will be one additional informational session. It's a drop-in session, and it's being held tomorrow evening, and details are provided in the report. And lastly, for special events and programs, I think this is a really neat event that Community and Social Services and the Aging and Disability Commission have put together. They are going to be hosting a sensory-friendly Santa event. This event is going to be held on Friday, December 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Eno Memorial Hall. It's an event that's free for folks of all ages. They'll have pictures with Santa, activities and refreshments, and I really encourage people to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I was making my elf ears. I'm going to be a sensory-friendly elf.
I'm curious what that entails. No, not the elf.
No previews.
All right. Thank you. Moving on now to Selectman Action. Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective today, November 26th, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $12,040.05, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B is the 2018-2019 JAG Grant. The Federal Justice Assistant Grant Program provides grants to local police departments for the purchase of technology equipment and protective gear. The anticipated grant award is $6,000. Is there a motion effective November 26th, 2018, to apply for and accept the 2018-2019 JAG Local VCP Grant that's been awarded to the town, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant application and award?
Moved. Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Item C is the Fiscal Year 2018 Homeland Security Grant, and I just wanted to ask Maria for a little bit of background on this.
Sure. Thank you. So our Emergency Management Director, Kevin Kowalski, had brought this to our attention. CROG is going to essentially be a pass-through for a regional grant that will be emergency management grant funds, and that the region would benefit from. As part of this grant process, we would need to, if we wanted to potentially take advantage of some of those grant opportunities and funds through this regional program, essentially need to authorize the attached resolution. That's that.
Okay. Great. Is there any questions? Maria? Is there a motion effective November 26th, 2018, to approve the Federal Fiscal Year 2018 State Homeland Security Grant Program Memorandum of Agreement, which makes the town of Simsbury eligible for regional allocations made through the Region III Regional Emergency Planning Team? Further move to approve the attached resolution that authorizes the town manager to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item D is Budget Status Report. So we're adopting a new practice where every quarter, staff will be preparing budget status reports for the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. I'll ask Finance Director Amy Meriwether, if you don't mind, to review the highlights, and then we can ask any questions we might have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So just a couple notes before I go into the Agenda Submission Form. You'll see that the reports that are attached are the Statement of Revenues and the Statement of Expenditures for the General Fund and the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund. The General Fund, for comparison, I use the budget, the fiscal year 19 budgeted balances compared to actuals through October 31st, 2018. But then you'll see that for Simsbury Farms, I made a comparison of actual from, as of October 31st, 2018, and compared it to October 31st, 2017. So the reason for this, the General Fund obviously has an adopted budget that they need to stay within. Simsbury Farms also has a budget, but it gives you more data looking at the same period last time, because, you know, their information is based on their charges for services, their member interest in programs, things of that nature, their seasonal fluctuations with the golf course. So it just gives you better information in looking at it that way as opposed to compare to the budget. So with that said, I will go ahead and share some good news as it relates to the General Fund. As noted in the Agenda Submission Form, the ECS grant is actually expected to come in at $637,000 more than budgeted, so that's some great news. We had our investment revenue, our investment earnings were budgeted $175,000, and earnings to date already total $158,000, which is 90% of the budget, so we're doing great there. And then we had a KERMA equity, Members Equity Distribution of $38,000. This is money that was not budgeted for, so again, some additional revenue to the town. And then moving on to the Simsbury Farms overview, not some great news here, but this was previously discussed, I'm not sure here, but it was definitely discussed at the Board of Finance meeting, where this fund has had year-over-year losses for probably about the last 10 years. This is an issue that management is working through with staff to kind of isolate what the issues are and how we can make it better going forward. But as of right now, the expenditures have exceeded revenues by about $307,000, and the majority of that relates to the golf course fees that are down almost $95,000. So those are the highlights. Anybody have any specific questions on any of the line items?
Of any of the things in the documents that you presented?
I do have a question on revenue, one of the revenue exhibits. So, Amy, just looking through the revenue, it's the building department and town clerk that are low as a percent of what was budgeted. Are those cyclical in terms of when those revenues come in during the fiscal year?
So those are, I mean, like for town clerk, those are marriage licenses, birth certificates, things of that nature. So not that they're cyclical, but they, you know, they're volatile. So there's no rhyme or reason to when somebody's going to come in asking for a building permit, a marriage certificate, things of that nature. So I'm guessing when they did the budget, it's just based on their best guesstimate for the year, and as it comes in, it's reported.
And what about the building department? Same, or?
Yeah, that would be the same.
Could we seriously, I mean, they're just, they're seriously under budgeted in terms of this exhibit, so it's just something to pay attention to for next year's budget?
Yeah. And something that we have noticed at a staff level is, an area of improvement for us during budget development is definitely around our revenue projections. It is something that we've picked up on, we're aware of the situation, and that is one of the items we're going to be reviewing with staff at the December 6th meeting, is refining our revenue projections, how we're doing that, how we're identifying those trends. So it is something we will be working on.
From a building department standpoint, it's not necessarily advantageous for a builder in New England to start late summer or fall, right? Because you can't necessarily build throughout, nor do you necessarily want to be on the Graham List 10-1. If you can avoid it, you want to be on the Graham List after 10-1. So I would imagine we would probably see some more springtime development, because those, I mean, those numbers, I think, I get where you're going, Chris, but we've seen, we've done the overview with planning on a long-term basis. These are approved projects in the pipeline as These are approved projects in the pipeline as from a building permit standpoint, how we looked at it. So I'm not aware of any projects that are necessarily off track or behind, so.
On the Simsbury Farms question, you said that at a staff level, there's a review looking at that drop in revenue. When can we expect to see the outcome from that?
So we, right now, are working on, again, as Amy pointed out, looking at the structural deficiencies, working on a staff report that will also have recommendations in terms of moving forward. Tom Tiberzki, Melissa, Amy, and myself are working on that. We're hoping to finalize that during the month of December. We would like to have that for budget season. What we think would be most helpful, and the Board of Finance has also talked about this issue, would be that once we have issued that report, would be to establish a small working group, perhaps of, we thought, maybe a member of the Board of Finance, perhaps a member of the Board of Selectmen, and somebody from Culture Parks and Recreation to work with us at a staff level, to really sort of iron out those recommendations, what may or may not be feasible from a policy standpoint. Because some of them, well, some of them, I think the recommendations are going to be more administrative in nature, some of them will be more policy-related. And so to have sort of a smaller work group of those three bodies working through some of those issues, and then ultimately bringing those recommendations to the policy bodies as a whole.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Amy? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bishop.
Item E is the Eno Facility Use Policy. The policy was last updated in 2010, and since then, staff has noted a number of challenges with the existing policy. So a few months ago, this board formed a working group, including myself and Cheryl, other key members of staff were also included in the discussion, including our Director of Social Services, Public Works, the Senior Center Coordinator, were all part of the process. A couple of the items that I'll highlight in particular that have been challenges is the prioritization of requests for the use of Eno, and also the fee waivers, both the amount of, the frequency of some fee waivers, and also when are they granted versus when are they not? Those are just a couple of the key areas. You can see the revised policy in your packet. I wanted to see if there were any questions or conversation.
I just, if it's okay to add, you know, a lot of our discussions centered around how the building is currently used. There's a lot of different groups doing a lot of different activities in that building, which is great, but what we have found is that as those different groups use them, they tend to move things around, they have different, you know, food and beverage needs, they have different supply needs, in, you know, access to the building, you know, how you get equipment in and out of the building. We have some concerns about the, you know, the bluestone in front of the building and some of the historic aspects, you know, molding doors, things like that, that we really have to try to preserve while we can. And we've been putting, you know, some assets into that building to improve the sound system, to make it more accessible to people with, you know, hearing disabilities, things like that. And we just want to make sure that it's still there for everybody to use. And so we tried to make it fairer, you know, a fairer system, and to preserve the building while we can, before some damage is done that we can't fix.
That's a good ad, thanks, Cheryl. Were there any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the revisions to the Eno Memorial Hall Facility Use Policy and Fee Schedule as presented, effective January 1, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Item F is the Eversource Energy Temporary Access Agreement. Eversource has requested a temporary access permit from the town to replace structures supporting its existing electrical transmission lines. Eversource is seeking access to their structures through a town-owned parcel located east of Ryan Circle and west of Penwood State Forest. To minimize the impact on abutters, the town has requested that access over the town property be restricted to, really, business hours, Monday through Friday. So as not to, you know, with the exception of emergencies on a weekend, but expect that to be rare. So the way Maria has framed this to us is in terms of three options, and I think Option A is to support this as it is. Option B would be to recommend a referral to the Conservation Commission, which is charged with managing open space. And then Option C would be to deny this request. So I just wanted to see where other people's feelings were at the moment.
Is there a reason not to do this? I mean, this is for the betterment of the transmission lines, right? This is, I mean, this is a public good, and there's an access issue, and we're leaving an access issue. The other way is, they could find another way in, but it might be far more intrusive to the wildlife or otherwise, helicopters, et cetera, right? And given the fact that that was the area that suffered some pretty substantial damage back in the 2010 storm, 2011 storm, right? Whatever it was, it's probably in our best interest from an electrical reliability stance to allow these upgrades. Right?
I'm on board with that.
So am I missing something else?
No. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No.
I think this is something we should be doing. It's definitely keeping our power grid in better shape, and I would, I see no problem with going with Option A to get this moving, but happy to hear what other folks say.
Well, I think we're all sensitive to the fact that there might be trees and other things that are going to have to be cut down, and it will look different for. And I understand that residents may be upset by the appearance of the project while it's happening, but I think we have to keep in mind, you know, as you said, that we do have to protect the power grid where we can, and that's the most important thing. And I'm sure Eversource is sensitive to the fact that we are looking to do as a minimal amount of damage while preserving the, you know, the electrical assets.
Correct me wrong, there's a requirement that they have to restore to the original state, whatever they do to the...
Right. But what I said, it is going to look, you know, it's going to be unsettling for people to see the trees and all that, so we have to acknowledge that.
Well, we have, yeah, I'm moving ahead with the least amount of bureaucracy, first of all. Will we have some representatives from town, I think, seen a project like this before, will we have some representatives from town monitoring the project so that it is there? I'm sure they're not going to not follow what are common practices for conservation and minimalization of effect on the area, but...
Sure. So my staff in the Engineering Department will be my lead on this for us, as well as the lead contact with Eversource. So one of the other pieces that we did state is that if, for some reason, they needed emergency access to the site, so sometime on like a late evening or a weekend, that they would need to sort of call ahead, if you will, speak with my engineering staff. And if, for some reason, that something was so urgent, that they would at least have to submit a written report to us afterwards. So the answer to your question is yes, and that engineering will be the lead for me.
Yeah, and they'll be monitoring, I imagine, periodically onsite, physically there, watching them go through.
Absolutely. We can do that, for sure.
I might feel a little bit different about getting deeper into the effects and other, you know, other perspectives in this, but the buildings are existing. The, it might be a little bit different, the request was to go in there to essentially raw land and build something, but I think we need to move forward as expeditiously and least bureaucratically as possible to accomplish what's good for the community.
Just to add one point, the terrain there does make it difficult for Eversource to access their right-of-way through other parcels, but not necessarily impossible, but it would be difficult. By accessing the parcel, their parcel, through our open-space parcel, again, I felt there was a level of protection for the neighborhood, because there are quite a few abutters who abut right up to this right-of-way. And that, again, that's where we felt it made a lot of sense to say to Eversource, "That's okay if you want to access, you know, that property, but only between these hours, you know, Monday through Friday." So folks wouldn't be, you know, hearing work at 6:00 AM on a Tuesday, or, you know, 4:00 PM on a Saturday, to try to help make things a little more comfortable for them.
Yeah. Would it be customary, something like this, to provide abutters with a letter, letting them know this is what's happening?
Sure.
I can answer from my perspective.
Sure. Could I just ask you to step up to the mic, because TV cameras pick you up better there?
Yeah, I can answer whatever questions you have, and I want to interrupt you when you're talking.
Great. Appreciate it. Would you mind just introducing yourself?
My name is Marissa Flynn. I'm the manager of Transmission Maintenance Planning. So Transmission Maintenance is the group that's replacing the structures out in this area. So as, I'm sorry, Eric? Was it Eric?
Sure, you can call me Eric. It's okay. It depends on how this question goes. I get beat up on Eric. If it looks good, I'm Chris.
So to your point, we can come off of another street other than Ryan Circle. We can come off, it's east on our maps, I don't actually think it's east, but the terrain is very rough. There would be more disruption to the area than what we'd like to do. So coming in through this access point is actually where we came through last year to do two of the structures. This would replace the remaining structures in that area. So theoretically, unless an emergency occurs, we wouldn't have to access those structures for a long time. So that touched on that point.
Yeah, and my question was just around notifying abutters.
Yep. So we send letters out to all the abutters ahead of time, letting them know what's going on, when they can expect to see people. And our outreach actually reaches out to every customer. We go door-to-door, we make phone calls, try to basically make contact with customers. I think we give up after, try five or six, but we make some sort of contact with the customers and let them know what's going on. As far as cutting trees down, there are already roads and a good portion of that, a good portion of the work that we're doing is also in wetlands, so we would be laying mats instead of putting down gravel in that area, and it's also in an endangered species area. So we have certain rules that we have to follow in that area as well. So we would be following that, and they actually, the deep actually will come out and spot-check to make sure we're following all those rules as well.
So you mentioned you already accessed this right-of-way to put in two other structures?
Last year.
So any issues with that? Any pushback from the neighbors, or any challenges there?
Nope. It was the same thing, they just wanted it during the week. So we typically say our construction is Monday to Saturday, which I think is why the document originally stated that. You guys asked us to change it to Monday to Friday, 7:00 to 5:00, I think it is. So we can do that.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. So is there a motion effective November 26, 2018, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute a temporary access agreement slash permit with Eversource Energy for the purpose of accessing their existing right-of-way on the east side of Ryan Circle and Hunting Ridge Road on parcel ID 10910600, owned by the Town of Simsbury? The permit would be issued through June 30th of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That motion carries.
Thank you.
And the last item under Selectmen Action G is the proposed tax abatement and fee waivers for 690 Hot Meadow. And I'll ask Melissa to turn on the projector, I just want her to put up there the details of the proposed abatement for transparency purposes. This property is the former Ensign Mansion, which is being renovated to include a restaurant and five apartments. The request has received a positive referral from the Business Development Incentive Committee. I also, we also received an email from the applicant indicating that they are no longer asking for the WPCA waiver. So just to be clear, that's off the table. I wanted to see if there was a discussion, any questions that any board members have. Sean?
So just to, I think, you guys all know this, but for the public, so we developed the Business Development Committee a number of years ago, I think out of a recommendation from EDC, et cetera, with, to make the tax abatement process honestly more transparent, to have, because previously funneled only through the First Electman's Office, I believe, and that was at the desire of the first elect person in the chair to hear that application or not, and there wasn't a good mechanism to get it to this board or to get it into a space for hearing. So that's, it was a well-intentioned policy to try to have folks from zoning, from the Board of Finance, from this board, and other interested parties, to fairly hear a tax abatement request and think about it from the different aspects of land use and finance. To have a better and informed decision to this board was, I believe, the intent of the committee. And we did put a policy in place at the time, which part of the request, as you noted, is to revise one of the items on there. I think we have a seven-year abatement period, and we're going to 10 potentially. But it prescribed that we could do up to 50% of permit fees, and it outlined the process, the application, the information we're looking for. So to me, I'm pleased to see this seems to have at least worked in this case from a getting it out there, having a discussion, getting it on the agenda, and providing, you know, all of us up here with a lot of information. My only question, Eric, and to you and to Maria, was do we have the ability to cap the abatement? Because for all, you all know, but just for the general public, the abatement actually floats. It depends on how much the property is worth at the time of the assessment. So while we think it could be 446, it could also be 571, it could be 256, it could be 872, it could, it's whatever it is, it's subject to the, as property taxes fall, and to me, as, and everybody knows, I like fixed liabilities. I like to know what they're going to be.
You don't like any liability.
Hence, no, I have no problem with liabilities, but like, much like my love for DC plans, I want to know how much it's going to cost me for however I'm signing up for. So to me, I think, at least personally, that's a fair way to look at an abatement. I appreciate the schedule, I have no problem with the percentages or the way it was calculated. I think it's very thoughtful and well-done. But I was interested in potentially just adding some very simple language of an amount not to exceed the 446 for the abatement. I didn't know if that was something we could consider and add to this.
That's something that I would be supportive of, and just to, for the public, the 446 is staff's estimate of what the abatement is worth over 10 years.
I'm not unreceptive to that, but I do want to point out, we have a number of different estimates from staff, and one of them does go up higher than the 476. The initial submission, I think, from Maria has the cost at the 476, but if you look at what we got received from Amy, as well as what we received, I think Amy's estimate was potentially higher than that. I just want to make sure that if we do set a cap, that we do one that's relatively consistent with the intent of the recommendation. So, I mean, David Gardner's potential cost is as much as 633, 754, and I think Amy was a little bit lower than that. And this did include the, and Amy's costs were as, potentially as high as 645. Now, that did include the sewer use, one as well, but Sean, I don't, I agree with your proposal, I just want to make sure that the cap that we set is relatively consistent with the actual proposal that we have from the Business Incentive Committee. I think the range is actually somewhere from that 475, you know, potentially upwards of $600,000, so.
Yeah, no, fair point, Chris, and I have no problem with the 50% permit, so I took that out. The cap would not be subject to the permit fees, I was only looking at the schedule of abatement for the taxes.
Would it be helpful if maybe we went over some of the background on how we got to those differing numbers? I know we have some of the people in the room here who were...
Yeah, absolutely. I think I could probably just jump in quickly here. And so what Amy's memo detailed was the, at least in the first half of the memo, was the request of the applicant. So the applicant's estimate for the value of the 10-year abatement was 571, 690. And then additionally, at the time of the application, the applicant was unaware that our policy only allowed for a waiver of up to 50% of the permit fees. So, and their initial request, that was part of the documented application, they were looking for 100%, a waiver of 100% of those permit fees. So that was something we had conversations around, and they understand that the policy only allows for 50%. So the value of the fee waivers for the permits that the Business Development Incentive Committee recommended was an estimated amount, again, up to the 50% that's allowable under the policy. So that's why that number is a little different from what was initially requested. And then again, our town assessor prepared an analysis for us, and a very conservative estimate of the abatement was 446, I'm sorry, $446,000. Certainly, that could be more or less dependent upon, you know, future values and things of that nature. And then to Sean's question about, sorry, I'll just go very quick, to Sean's question about the fix... about, sorry, I'll just speak very quick. To Sean's question about the fixed dollar amount, you know, could we do something to say, yes, we want to work with the schedule, but in an amount not to exceed $446,000? The answer is yes. I did confirm with Bob that he would feel comfortable structuring an agreement in that manner. He said absolutely. He has done that in the past. So for example, if we were to say in an amount not to exceed 446,000, things are going great. The property's assessed at a great value. Let's say by year seven, we've reached that. Essentially, that's when the abatement would stop, is when that not-to-exceed amount kicked in.
I was going to ask, when, when staff sets a conservative estimate, that's, in other words, a low-end estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fair. So, yeah, and Chris, there was a lot of numbers on here, because I read through it several times and had to ask a lot of questions. So you, the 645 you're mentioning is what I think David would view the total taxes owed on the property over a 10-year schedule. He came to the 446, netting out the 199 would get paid in that 10 years. So there's a ton of numbers on here. Because, you know, I originally thought it was 571. You know, Jerry can tell you about that conversation.
She may know.
How I felt about that. You know, I'm willing to be fair on this. I think it's an important property, as was talked about by Dave. And obviously, with the submission from an historical value, this is the second time we've looked at an abatement on this property, albeit it's a different project. But the need doesn't change. There's substantial remediation issues in that building that we know of. It qualifies for state grants because, as was articulated, these are not easy projects to get done, and they are risky. So, you know, I totally, totally get that. You know, from an aesthetic standpoint, we've heard time and again that that building is the visual anchor of our downtown gateway, of our corridor. That's the beginning. So I think it's, you know, important there from bringing folks into town. Again, there is going to be folks that live there, which we are, while it's, again, a different project, people are still going to be able to walk to Fitzgerald's, walk to the coffee shop and otherwise. And that, we heard testimony years ago on this when we were looking at it, that that was appeal, appealing to the active, didn't call themselves seniors, but seniors population in town, that they were interested in relocating. So again, no, no question from my standpoint on the benefits to this. I just, you know, and as I thought about it, I can't give you a better number. I don't know what the right number is. And I appreciate the thought that went into this from a, a, an assessment with the Business Development Committee. So, I mean, Chris, if we want to, you know, maybe approve the schedule as it is, but put a cap of, I don't know, 500 or 475, or whatever is, whatever we, you know, we think is fair. But I don't want to start necessarily picking numbers out of the air either.
Yep.
Well, we did look at this property before. So we did have some numbers in mind when it was a different project.
Yep.
And I have, for me personally, I am very happy to see this project in its current form, you know, over what we saw before. So I am willing to, you know, support that, you know, that this project, even more so than I was, was before. And I just want to make sure we have the right number. I am, I think I could go, say, $500,000 as a number somewhere between where we've, you know, the high and the low. I'm utterly picking that, you know, out of the air. But I think it has some justification in the ranges we've seen, if you want to go that way.
Yeah, my memory was, we approved 300, but we were willing to consider up to 497.
Yeah.
Based on additional details, why we picked 497, I'm not entirely sure. I remember. It might have been 478. It was either 497.
479, actually.
479, okay. Sorry. I knew there was a four and a seven and a nine in there. So.
Yeah, I think it was 479.
That was for a seven-year abatement.
It was a seven-year.
Yeah.
But the state law at the time was only seven years, right?
That was all we could do.
So I think if there's a project that meets the intention of this kind of abatement, this is the project. It's got historical issues. It's readily visible in town. I think it is important that we do something with this. And, you know, I would be supportive of the 500,000 cap.
Mark, do you want to add something?
Yeah, please.
Thanks, you know, my name is Mark Scully, and we are, we are the owners of 690 Hot Meadow. Although I use that word very tentatively, we really, you don't own a property like that. We are the stewards of that property. And we are, I truly say, we are honored to have the opportunity to sort of get this property ready for the next 100 years. And I won't repeat, I think a lot of the points have been made. I thought maybe it would be helpful to just touch a little bit on our thinking of why we came to you with this percentage approach, because that was different. In the past, it was a fixed amount. And the percentage approach, we've learned from a project in East Hartford. It was Renshaw Field, and that was exactly the approach they were taking. It was 10 years. It started with 100% abatement for the first two years, and it was a declining percentage. And that seemed to have a lot of logic to it. And the reason we propose that is that it does protect the town and it does protect the project. As has been mentioned, this is a project that does need gap financing. And we are deeply appreciative of whatever the town decides to do. But there's a pretty big gap between what we're spending and what the building by our bank's estimates and even by the town's estimates, what the building will be worth. And I think there's legitimate concern of what precedent we're setting here. But let me throw out one way to consider this, is that this is a very unique property. There aren't, aren't very many like this in town. But one precedent that the town could set is that, is to say to potential developers, yes, if you are willing to take a building like this and develop it in a responsible manner, get, do the remediation that it needs, do it in a way that is consistent with the plan of conservation development, consistent with the goals of the town, then we will support you. So developers can look at that and say, well, I can maybe do this without losing a couple million dollars. So I would encourage you to think of it that way. And the percentages, I would, I would encourage you to consider just the percentages as the Business Development Committee had approved, to really, to consider those as sufficient without a cap. I think it's going to be, in the end, entirely arbitrary, what is the right number. Is it, 446 is clearly a very conservative number. Is it 500? Is it 700? I don't, I don't know how you would get that number. And I think the town is protected. The liability would go up, but the asset would go up by even more. So you're hedged. So that would be my request. So I don't know if you have any questions. But again, we're deeply appreciative, not only of this tax abatement, but the support the town has given us throughout this project.
Thank you.
Mark, may I ask you, just, you brought up the word financing. So how, my sharing, generally, not getting too deep into your personal of the project, how is it being financed?
Basically.
What are the vehicles?
Basically, a couple of different sources. We're putting a lot of, a lot of our retirement in there. We'll be taking out a bank loan. We are, we've received approval for historic tax credits. So the state Historic Preservation Office and the federal do reimburse some, as long as, so for the brownstone, right, there's two parts to that property. There's the, the Anson House and then the annex. The brownstone is eligible for historic tax credit. So those are the key sources. There's a small amount of energy efficiency credits we can get. But.
You played into my hand, in the sense that I wanted to hear that, I think it's important that the other, the townspeople here, that there's part of your own equity. This is part of your own savings going to this. And this changes the dynamic entirely for me. And I'm in full support of it. And this is the, this is an example of the, of a, we create a project, you better be ready to use the project and to its fullest extent. And I think this is a fantastic example of it. I look at the project, have been sitting there for five, we're worried about taxes not being earned over the next 10 years. But what has happened with that property relative to the value of the town in the last five years, we haven't essentially nothing out of it. Here is, here are individuals with their own passion and their own risk to a certain extent, adding to our community, adding to an important building in our community, bringing in businesses that are varied, that are better than, this is different than some outside investor, which I, Rich, sorry. You know, I know you're a landlord, but, but, but an outside investor coming in who is looking for tax abatement and is going to put in a bland business that doesn't add to the fabric of our community is completely something else to me. And I applaud you all for doing this, and I'm in full support of it. And I, I think that all the right reasons to do this and support it. And I trust, whatever the numbers are, those numbers are developed by professionals in this town that know far greater than we do. And I'm sure that they're, they're as close to being accurate and trendable going forward. And I'll agree with anybody who they feel they need the importance of having a cap.
Any other questions for Mark?
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
Sean? I'm glad you brought up precedent, because I agree. I think this is probably the only building in town that we would consider this type of project. We're not that, we would certainly consider abatements for others. But when we look at schedules and caps and other things, I think that's where it is important to make sure that we're thinking about precedent. We have done a cap in the past. And I do feel pretty strongly about continuing that practice. I'm very much, again, I'm in favor of abatements at different projects at different times, for different reasons. But, but I do, I do think we need to be very transparent with what the, with liabilities. And I get that we can hedge in property values, et cetera. But I, again, I'm in favor of this, but my preference is, is to put the cap that we discussed on it. So with that, you want to motion?
I guess I'm, I just want to see where, where folks' heads are at with the cap. An informal straw poll. Mike, cap? Sean, cap?
I'm fine with a cap.
I was in favor of the percentage thing coming out of Business Development. I would rather have a cap than nothing. But it would be, so I could do that.
I agree, Sean.
Okay. So it sounds like we would be supportive of a cap. Is half a million dollars the right number?
Can we hear from, is it possible to hear from Mr. Gardner, maybe on, that's where the estimate came from?
Sure.
Sure.
To hear a...
Yeah, that's what I would, I would, these numbers were put forth by individuals who are experts, far beyond this group up here at this table. So, I mean, I think that if you would feel better with color from who developed the number, then that's, that's fine.
No, because I feel like we just threw that out there.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't want to be flippant about that. I want to make sure that we're grounded in, in some fact.
Yeah, agreed.
Consider the probable rent level they go from moment, or can you see that?
At that standpoint, and also hearing, this is a similar number from the bank, the round figure is around 2.1 million. And so the taxes, even if, at the current, that value would be 53,000 or 500, something like that. So 446 is a bit low, even in that scenario. So other, 500,000 or only 10%, 10% higher.
Is there another number that you think is more appropriate?
No, I didn't.
Or there's...
This is, this is an estimate, maybe worth in a couple, a couple of years when it's done, throwing that forward over 10-year period.
Yeah, I understand. It's a different projection.
So, I would be happy, I'd be relieved to see it's something more than 446,000.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that.
Based on the percentages, I mean, even if we did, I mean, if we did 446, if we did five, the abatement's going to last in, fully, till at least the middle of the ninth term. We would potentially be talking about maybe losing the abatement for the last half of the ninth and into the 10th year. But we're not talking about jeopardizing the abatement for these folks in the fifth, sixth year, I don't believe, based on quick math. And that's, obviously, it's front-loaded intentionally, because that's the most fragile time.
Right.
Right, from an investment standpoint.
Yeah.
Again, I want to see this project be very, very successful. And again, I am not suggesting that we make the permit fees subject to that cap. Permit fees would be over and above that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Always talking about the 10-year abatement schedule.
Sure. And, you know, since we're just talking about this not-to-exceed concept this evening, if you feel like you'd need just a little more time and want us to do some additional analysis, or again, if you just feel that you need some additional time, we could certainly put this on the December 17 agenda. Or if you feel prepared to take action tonight, that's okay as well. I wanted to offer that as an option.
Well, here's how I actually like to look at this. So we, we really don't know what the number is, but there's a reasonable range, right? So the 446 may be an uncomfortably conservative number. What's an uncomfortably liberal number? What is that range? And I, I feel when I can see that reasonable range, it enables me to be wiser in terms of what's the appropriate number. I think there are advantages to the cap, but we don't want the cap to undermine what the intent of the proposal is.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think we're all in agreement with that. So if we can make a better decision in a couple of weeks, that's my preference. And I, and generally, I'm always comfortable with, with looking at what a range is. And then we can make a decision, where within that range do we want to be. That's just kind of my, my take on it. I'm not against voting for it tonight, but I would support the idea that, that I could give you a wiser decision from me if we had a little bit more information.
And I appreciate that, but at the same time, the assessor just said he would be pleased if it was 500.
I'm also a little concerned that we're holding up the applicants for an reasonably long period of time. They have already been waiting for a decision. And I, you know, would rather give them certainty.
What is, what is, what is that impact on you? To give us, just anecdotally, you hear that number being thrown out there. What is that?
Should I step up to that?
You can.
I've already been called stupid tonight, so you can fire away.
No, I think that was me.
We would appreciate, we would actually prefer to have some time to look at that number, if there's going to be a cap, to actually, you know, to look at the number that the assessor was producing. And I believe there is some upside to the, to the business that we're, that we're bringing in there. It's not reflected in the 446. I think that's upside for us, and it's upside for the town. That would increase the assessment. So it would increase both the amount of taxes you're getting and the amount that we would get. And I think, I think the cap would, I'm, I'm optimistic that we're going to hit that cap really quick. So.
Yeah, so it's not hamstrung you. It's not under, it's very comfortable dialoguing. Not the proper way to do this.
Right.
I don't think you heard anybody up here say we're not in favor of supporting your...
Right.
But let's give, let's give all of us real numbers of our, and it's also the deal of us, real responses, when the public comes back at us and challenges us. We have, we're not up here just throwing numbers up in the air and trying to shoot them down.
Right.
I would be fine stretching out. I honestly thought that the applicant would prefer to get this going.
So did I, yeah.
And I was prepared to, at this point, go with the 500 plus the 50% building fees, which would push that number technically higher. But I'm, I'm fine waiting as long as you are.
I like waiting. I would just add, 500,000 is, is only a 10.8% difference between the 446 Dave mentioned this. I just think when you're wrong on these estimates, by what percent do you tend to be wrong? And that sounds like a conservative, again, I'm not an expert at this, it sounds like a conservative range to be wrong by. So, you know, it may be that we have to look at a number that's a bit higher, so.
Don't disagree, but if we come back and it's 550, I mean, what, I mean, I get it's 50 grand, but, you know, is that number not, are we talking about removing the cap entirely? Or are we talking about getting better, better educated on the cap?
Better educated on the cap.
That's, that's what I prefer as well. But I agree with you. It's, we've had these conferences in the past, I mean, the numbers are negligible. Are they going to be the reason why I stop or start something? No. But it allows us to, when we make the decision, to say that was the number we settled on versus, earlier was, 500,000 sounds good.
Right.
That's, I can't.
To be honest, my other motivation for the cap is, I mean, at some point, we have to look the taxpayers in the eye and tell them how much money we're foregoing. And I, I get that a number can float. And again, I understand the schedule, but looking at taxpayer in the eye and saying 500,000 versus, I don't know. And I get that I don't know isn't a fair answer, but it's, it's somewhat of a true answer. The other piece of it is, is as we stretch this out into the budget times, it doesn't get more palatable, let's put it that way. The state is not going to do good things to us this, this spring. They still have a massive pension liability that they tried to give us two years ago, that they probably will give us this time. Again, we all read the governor's projections and where the budget's going. We are not going to... We are not going to be in good shape come budget time, so I, I, stretching this out isn't necessarily a good idea, too, too far.
But we're only waiting till the next meeting, right?
Yeah, and we did a water and it's for two years, so I just want to make sure that we, want to make sure we get this done.
This is something we're in favor of.
Well, Sean, if you're supporting this, I'm not worried about a two-year process.
My only concern was the applicants, holding them up, and if you're, you know, I don't want to be a hindrance.
No, I don't, I don't either. That's not why I'm putting the cap. It has nothing to do with the project, everything else, it's overall, holistically, when you look at the town, and I think about future projects, and, and again, I'm, I'm going to continue to ask for caps on all abatement projects as I've looked for in the past, so I, I don't want to be out of line with one and not another.
Well, this is the first project that the, the business development committee has considered in, in quite a few years, and I think that it is worth doing this one thoroughly and with as much transparency as possible, so that when the next applicant comes along, we all know what to expect, we all know, you know, where we should be looking for the answers. I'm sorry that, you know, you're going to be a guinea pig in this, but it's, hopefully it'll be worth it to both you and to the development of the town, because, you know, we all like to see that, so, I could do that.
All right. So I...
Just don't talk about it.
Is there any other conversation before I ask if there's a motion to table this item till our next meeting? Okay?
Move to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Put you on the front of the agenda next time.
All right, moving on to appointments and resignations.
Eric.
Oh, yeah.
Do you mind taking care of the housekeeping?
What did I forget?
The housekeeping policy changes?
Oh, yeah, let's do that. So this is amending the, where am I?
The process itself.
Yeah.
Right, and then reflecting that change in statute from seven years to 10 years, if in fact you are supportive of that recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this would be to revise the business development incentive policy as presented.
I just have one amendment.
Yeah.
Application procedure, step four, on, upon a preliminary review by the Board of Selectmen at the direction, the first selectman can no longer direct anybody to do anything. So it's at the direction of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, it's a good call.
Yes.
Good point.
Yep.
You're the boss.
Good, good point. Thank you.
So I move that we, we need for an official motion.
Sure.
Move that we accept the, the business development incentive policy as proposed with the amendment I just made to step four.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item H are the Board of Selectmen goals. Can you put those up, Melissa? At our last meeting, we asked the town manager to organize the priorities we identified by both long-term and short-term goals, and identifying goals as strategic and administrative in nature. So you can see the last two columns there, do that. My only, my only question, if we go to the very bottom, very, very bottom, I wasn't totally loving the optics of saying that those two items at the bottom are not important.
Not important.
We all ran out of votes. We did run out of votes.
I was just wondering if there's, if this is being published for posterity, if there's another way that we can frame that.
If you want transparency and clarity, there it is.
No, I just would put it, no, no more...
A goal's a goal.
More stickers, I couldn't rip mine in half.
Put longer term.
We're going to have to have purple stars.
Not ranked.
Right.
Please.
Not ranked.
But again, we just want to, want confirmation that, that this reflects our feelings around the priorities, and then this would be put into a formal motion. Because this, again, will be used by the town manager for allocating staff time, budgetary items, as I imagine some of her own goals as well. So any, any feedback on this?
I like that change.
Okay. Is there a motion to, oh, that's the wrong one. Is there a motion effective November 26, 2018, to adopt the 2018-19 Board of Selectmen goals with the, with this small change that we discussed?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. On appointments and resignations, is there a motion to accept, with our thanks, the resignation of Peter Tadone as a regular member of the Police Commission, retroactive to November 15, 2018?
So moved.
I'll second that with our thanks.
With our thanks.
Just a comment that only Peter is changing his residency?
His wife is Lydia.
Yes, I know.
Lydia is not changing her residency, just to be clear, if anybody was questioning or wondering that.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Is there any feedback on the minutes from our last meeting on November 14? Okay, then those stand. Are there any selectman liaison or subcommittee reports? Anything that anyone wanted to raise under communication?
I would just like to thank the Sensory Celebrates Committee for putting on a wonderful activity for the town. I think it's a great way for the town to come out and celebrate its traditions, and I know they were in a tough spot, trying to sort of redo the organization, and they did a great job.
Thanks, Cheryl. Agreed.
Totally agree.
I did want to, want to acknowledge the letter we received from the chamber, referencing discussions that we had, this board had about a year ago, about possibly finding a new location for the visitor center, and in the process, possibly partnering with the chamber on identifying, and I'm, I'm assuming, helping fund a, a new office. I gave some thought to this, and I want to make sure that we're not just, you know, letting this sit out there. But I thought about this, and we just discussed our Board of Selectmen priorities, we just tasked the Economic Development Commission with a number of things, and there's, there's nothing on there around, around the new visitor center, that just didn't rise to, to a place that this group set as a priority. So my thought process is, I'm sure that there will be discussion around funding the visitor center, again, as we have in the past in the upcoming budget cycle, but I, I just wanted to see if that reflects the, the feeling of this board that we would be unlikely to pursue something significantly larger at this time.
I would like to challenge us to think about a visitor center and the, how we're moving forward, not the concept of a small-town kiosk, as perhaps in the past. I mean, everybody has at least one smart device, or, or multiple in their possession at any one time now, and is a visitor center digitally, electronically, the better mechanism with geolocation and otherwise, to provide that support versus a physical place that someone has to recognize, find a parking space, walk into, and spend the time? And I understand that, you know, I'm the millennial, so I say that, but, you know, as, as we're thinking about it, I would challenge the chamber and, and this group to think about it in, in terms of visitor center of the future versus a physical location. And is it better served, again, by website, technology, staff, or otherwise, versus a nice little building that somebody has to spend a lot of time and effort to get into?
And as the other resident millennial on this board, I would second that, that sentiment.
I used to be the only one.
Yeah, sorry, Sean. I, I guess my, my point is, nowhere in, in these discussions, if we, our board priorities or the EDC priorities, did a visitor center come up, and that's not saying it's not something I'd be supportive. But I guess where does, where does that fall amongst our priorities?
Too new to rate. Are you asking us to reconvene that meeting to...
I am not.
I'm not exactly sure what you want to know.
I guess what I'm, I want to...
Do the stickers.
I don't want to leave, I don't want to leave the chamber and their, their thoughtful letter to us hanging out there. I want to be able to at least give them some direction on where this board is, is headed with that issue. We don't have to decide that tonight.
No, I know. But after we had some discussion at our EDC work groups about this, the Tourism Committee has been one of those commissions that we've sort of underused, and the visitor center is one of those projects that I think that, between tourism and the new EDC, perhaps they should look at. That the chamber took it on because we asked them to, but, you know, that doesn't necessarily always have to be the case. And, you know, as Sean said, there are other ways to do this. Sometimes people like to have somebody answer the phone and say, you know, hey, what do you think, you know, this activity is better than that activity, or whatever, they just want an opinion. Or they're new and they just don't know. So there is some value to having a human being be able to answer those questions, but it doesn't mean there isn't a way to do that in a more electronic format, that's more economic, you know. But I think tourism might be a place to start having that conversation. I mean, that is where visitor, that's part of visiting.
Yeah.
Is tourism. And we have had a lot of discussion about where tourism falls into the economic development program now, so...
Yeah.
It's just something to think about.
Which one of us was the liaison? I should have picked some of those. Sounds like Sherry wants to do it.
No, I really, no, but it did come up in the work group, so I, I just think that, you know, before we get this board all bent out of shape about the amount of money we're going to be asked for, for that.
I was going to make a comment about how we just debated the visitor center.
We just kicked around the, you know, half a million dollars, and then, you know, 1% is...
I understand that, but it will be kicked around, so...
No.
But maybe there's a better way to do this, without...
I think...
My, my inclination is that, I know, Eric, you're put, you, that they put forth a letter, we've got a couple of different situations like this that we kind of, you know, we took a, we minced up last year, and it, we had those discussions at, at the same time, in a defined period of time. So I, I don't know if it's, if it's just more appropriate to maintain that this discussion occurs in that same time period, that we're considering all the other dynamic and difficult decisions that we're going to be considering again next year's budget, versus, versus addressing especially outside of the, I know they want to, I mean, I know they, they need, they need to develop their budget for the year, they need to draw that $5,000 from someplace else like they did last year, I'm incredibly sympathetic of that.
Yeah.
But I mean, kind of like, absent of all the other information that we considered at the same time to make that decision last year.
What I'm hearing in this conversation is that this is a more strategic question that they're asking, which is perhaps better put to the Tourism Committee to work with them and other stakeholders in town and put it together, a thoughtful recommendation.
I wouldn't even go farther than that, Eric. I, I think that it is our job to strategically think about where we want to go, and I, as the non-millennial of the group, I, I'm very cognizant of that, I don't understand some of this stuff, but I think that we need to figure out what the town wants to do from a digital aspect, and I think, to Sean's earlier point, that is something we should consider. I do think it should be under the town's control, because it is the town's technical visitor center that we're putting out there. Now, whether it's done through Main Street, or the chamber, or some other group, that's kind of a different issue, but we should have a handle on how that's being handled. And, but I, I think we need to give some direction, as, in the past, we've actually had different groups that started their own websites and did some other things, and that's not necessarily the way to go.
Well, that, you know, I think one of the, Mike, one of the interesting things, Mike, is that in Lou's letter, he points out, I mean, the, the success of the Art Trail is, it's unfathomable. I mean, nobody, so that was one of the things that Lou promoted, it's in there. But I think the irony is that the success of the Art Trail was because of a digital, mostly digital awareness, not because of somebody calling in. So it's not that, that, I don't understand the perspective of them and the value that they've probably received, or we've received, from a, a physical visitor center, but the actual example cited is probably the exact opposite of that, as our success story.
I would do as far as I'd be willing to give them as much or more to ensure that the digital, that the statues and others come back next year. I mean, from an economic development and a, and a visitor driver standpoint, I mean, again, I mean, every moment you drove through town, there was somebody taking a picture in front of one of those statues, and, I mean, people from out of town, as, Chris, as you talked about, and my father talked, when he'd stop at the bridge, he would run into somebody from Long Island, or from Manchester, from Long Meadow, and it was never a person from town, it was somebody from out of town coming in to visit that, so we can partner with them on that, if, you know, I mean, again, there's, we don't have, we don't, we don't have a lot of funds, but let's make them worthwhile with whatever it is, and we've kind of been stuck in this $5,000 for the visitor center, which may or may not be, actually be a visitor center argument for, you know, three or four years. But I've always been willing to help the chamber, let's find the most effective way to do it.
I think that sums it up. Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Any other conversation on this? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session with Town Manager Maria Capriola to discuss the annual performance review?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.